Meeting is called to order. Veronica, would you please call the roll call?
Sure. Chair McNamara, here. Mike Sheriff Fleming?
Here.
Treasurer Milliken?
Here.
Secretary Davis?
Here.
Trustee DeMarty?
Here.
Trustee Hatcher?
Here.
Trustee Landau?
Here.
Well, I guess it's turn it over to...
Oh, acceptance of office.
Yes. Turn it over to the President.
Yes, thank you. I have the honor. Perme?
It's acceptance of office.
Oh, it's after... Well, on the copy I have approval of the agendas after acceptance of office.
Okay. Trustee Landau and Trustee McNamara. Where's the best photo? I mean, it's not for me, okay?
I think Vanessa wants us...
Like, right here, okay. Thank you.
Hopefully, this will be better than the President's production review.
Trustee McNamara, please raise your right hand and give me a message. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Trustees of Washtenaw Community College. Gratitude, my ability.
Say yes.
And I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of the Office of...
And the duties of the Office of...
Member of the Board of Trustees.
Member of the Board of Trustees.
Of Washtenaw Community College.
Of Washtenaw Community College.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well done.
Trustee Landau, please raise your right hand.
I am.
All right, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of a Member of the Board of Trustees.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties as a member of the...
As a trustee of the Board of Washtenaw Community College. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you so much. Man, that was rough. You know, that is such an honor. So, thank you for allowing me to have that honor.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, that's over with. And thank you so much, my colleague, Trustee Landau. Looks like we're locked in again.
We are.
Locked in.
All right. I'd like to have approval of the agenda.
I'll move approval of the agenda.
Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd like to have a approval of the minutes, November 27th retreat and the monthly meeting of November 27th. Can I get a motion?
So moved, I'd move we approve the minutes. Support.
Thanks, moved and seconded. Do I hear... Oh, I did that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and we'll move on from that. And I'd like to do a citizen participation.
I just wanted to tell one of your homes that's in its land. I'm trying to purchase a few homes in the area. I'm an investor here. I just thought that I'd reach out.
I hit the wrong email. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's micrily it's...
We already...
Is there any verbal communication? No? Okay.
Yes, WCC.
WCCEA?
I'll stay here if you don't mind. I've only got two points to make. The first is, is that you'll see in your packet, we have two longtime faculty members who are retiring, one of whom is Jeffrey Donnahead, who I believe has been here thirty-four years. And I want to take special note of his contributions to the college over the past four-year period. I believe he is, at the moment, the senior-most member of the faculty. And so, all of us will be moving up that ladder when he leaves. The only other thing I have to bring your attention, though, I wish everyone here a happy holiday and hope the membership feels the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and same to you. That's a part of the... I know that was a part of the personnel recommendations, but thank you for speaking out about that now. Okay. Now, we're going to public. Are there any public comments? And written communications? There are none. Special reports, the GRIM cybersecurity bench demonstration, Dean Sumoski.
Sumoski.
So, I'm sure many of you remember a few months back, Mike and I got up and talked about how we were purchasing a mobile hacking lab. So, we finally have it on campus, and we are here to present it to you. So, Mike Elliott is one of our full-time instructors in CIS. Cindy Mills was brought on this fall as an additional cybersecurity instructor. And I'd like to introduce Jennifer Tisdale. She's from GRIM. She is a company... She's with a company that we partnered with to build this training module for our students to actually learn on. So, Mike and Cindy are going to talk a little bit about the mobile hacking workbench, what it does, and how they're going to incorporate it into their curriculum.
Before we do, I guess I have a little video clip to show you. It's supposed to be slides. I'll stop you right there. Now, is this fantasy, is this plausible to them? It is fantasy. But twenty-five years ago, the idea that a couple of determined individuals could take over tens of thousands of computers on the Internet is also fantasy, but that's happened on a regular basis. They're called botnets. That's over the years, the largest one that's been discovered has been over a hundred thousand computers being controlled by smaller individuals. Now, it's fantasy today because we don't have continuous Internet connectivity with vehicles. It's only intermittent. And vehicles today are a lot different than the cars I used to work on. I used to have a little Austin E., I could pull the engine out in about a half hour, have it to the garage floor and work on it. I wouldn't dream of touching my car today. And here's an example, right? The accelerator. It used to be a mechanical device. Today, you use the accelerator pedal from Ford Focus. If you look at it, it's actually two wires going back to a computer that's in fact controlling the throttle on that vehicle. So, you can imagine what happens if somebody can take over that computer, what you can do with that throttle, right? So, this is what we've envisioned here. This is going to be one of the things that we want to integrate in our cybersecurity program. And what you see here is from a Ford Focus, and a number of different modules are called ECUs, but they're computers. Because today, cars today are just basically computers on wheels, many computers on wheels. Now, the big difference today also in a vehicle is that security is being built into these vehicles. There's a number of different modules here, and the interfaces between those modules are something called a gateway. Think of the gateway as sort of your broadband router at home, because that's in fact what it is. It's actually your broadband routers there, not to just send traffic out to the Internet, but also to protect your own network from anybody breaking in. So, that's what these things are doing. Now, today, and this particular unit here, the kind of technology that's used, because it's in fact, cars are just computer network on wheels, is something called a CAN bus. Very low bandwidth, it's about one megabit per second. But if you look at the technology that we have today, and the technologies coming down, you know, down the road, things like adaptive cruise control, collision avoidance, all this other business, the CAN bus can't handle that. So, they're actually now researching, looking at putting Ethernet, and if you don't understand, you're running Ethernet at home. Ethernet is the world I've lived in for the past twenty-five years. That's computer networks, okay? Because of all the sensors that we're going to have in vehicles. And just to give you an example, and again, these are just hacks that would have been done in a, you know, in sort of an experimental environment. Most recently, there was a Tesla vehicle using LiDAR to basically detect whether there's something in front of it so it would stop collision avoidance. They were able to actually blind that LiDAR so it's smashed right into whatever obstacle it was. If you've read recently, GM last month ran an ad, they're hiring a whole bunch of hackers. Interestingly enough, my former students who graduated from our cybersecurity program about three years ago, where we didn't never, you know, three years ago, we weren't envisioning doing something like this, is actually working today for a German auto supplier, and what he's doing is hacking cars, trying to find out what the vulnerabilities are. And that's what we intend to do with this, you know, with this device here. We call it ACE, our Auto Cyber Educator, okay? And that's Cindy Mills. And both her and I are going to be developing curriculum for this. We've yet to get training on it, so there's not much that we can show you today. We'll be receiving training shortly. But it's one of the things that in fact, we have an interface here, we can actually connect computers to it, and it's not going to be very exciting, you know? This is not like TV, it's not like that video clip that we saw. But what we're going to be able to do is actually monitor the traffic going on this CAN bus and alter it, okay? And basically do different things. So, that's the things that we're planning to do. And I think we mentioned back when Eve and I presented to you this past summer, what our intent is, one, integrate this into our existing cybersecurity program, give our students sort of an introduction, but we're also planning on creating a certificate strictly on auto hacking, because I think that field is going to grow by leaps and bounds in terms of job opportunities for our students in the coming years. Anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I think a great kind of tie into that would be to bring up Jennifer Tisdale. Jen is from... Jennifer's from GRIM, and GRIM is the company that purchased this. And so, that connection directly to industry, I think, is so important for our students. Did you mention anything or talk about industry?
Well, I'll say that GRIM developed this initially for our own purposes in marketing to the automotive OEMs and suppliers. The reason why it was so important to have the visual aid is because it is such an abstract concept, the concept or the notion of hacking a car. So, unlike the video clip, it does take weeks and weeks and weeks to gain access into a vehicle, but the more familiar you become with a particular brand, make, and model, and this is a 2012 Ford Focus, so my team, GRIM is a team of various skilled hackers. Three of my guys come from aerospace, power and energy, and one from automotive, but it's all embedded systems, so the tactics are the same. Embedded system cybersecurity is growing exponentially in industry. We're seeing it in auto, we're seeing it in aerospace. Those skills will translate into robotics. So, although you might be featuring it as an automotive cybersecurity course, embedded systems translates over a wide vast of verticals in industry. For my team, we need to grow by twenty over two years, and it's like growing our own farm of unicorns, right? We know that we are going to have to develop them to one degree or another ourselves, because there isn't an existing degree program that focuses on this. A certificate is more valuable to me at GRIM than a PhD-level certification. So, and that's really for a multitude of reasons, one being that the more indoctrinated a student becomes into the engineering process at the PhD level, the more difficult or challenging it is for us to teach them how to reverse engineer the software. And it becomes sensitive when we start talking about defensive and offensive tactics in cybersecurity, because offensive tactics are not popular. But it is a way of life, right? So, you can't really understand how to make or harden a system unless you know where the vulnerabilities are, and so you have to be able to break it. So, any opportunity to weave your makers and your breakers together, I think, you know, I know I support fully, and I think industry as a whole supports fully. And certainly, with an automotive workbench, it gives you that experience, that hands-on, to even gauge your interest. Now, just as a note for Mike and Cindy, we have our automotive security course that we have, and from our experience, what we've learned is those that have a computer science background do a lot better than those that have an automotive engineering, mechanical and electrical engineering. Students do not necessarily have the right background programming languages. So, to have a model that blends those two worlds together at an earlier age is going to be very valuable. And so, congratulations to Washtenaw Community College for being so forward-thinking. You are the first of your kind. I hope you market the heck out of it. I know I will be. And others are a couple of years away from catching up to you. I know that there are a few other schools in Michigan that are looking at cyber-physical security, but not like this, and not certain hands-on elements. So, I think you should all give yourself a round of applause. Congratulations.
Thank you, Jen.
Questions? Yeah.
American Center for Mobility is just down the road here. How does all the work that you're doing tie with ACM?
I think we'll probably be working with them in the future. We haven't really approached them yet, you know, certainly Michelle's very much involved with them, but we'll certainly be...
And we look at this too. I mean, this is obviously a great piece for the cybersecurity, but program that we have in the CUS IT department, but it's also a great tool that we can collaborate with the automotive folks. We're going to be collaborating with the advanced manufacturing, and it all comes under that umbrella of the ATC, our Advanced Transportation Center. And so, that program itself works very closely with, you know, some of these different industry partners, and so we just hope to, we're going to be building on that synergy. So, we're really excited to embark on.
And I have a friend that actually works at the GM Research Labs, developing things like, he sells a number of patents, he's one of the foremost experts in GM on collision avoidance. You remember Don?
Yes.
As a matter of fact, his name is Don Grim. Last fall, he presented during his service. And so, we're going to have that, you know...
If I could add on to that, I know that GRIM, and with Mike Fugias role with the state, is very heavily engaged with ACM in building out their cybersecurity search lab and what that will mean. I know that GRIM, I think it's going to be next year, phase two of development will happen with their tech park, and we intend to have a satellite office there, a presence, not really an office, more like a warehouse setting. That will be where we pull our vehicles in, but we will be working with the OEMs and the suppliers. And what I really hope happens is that we create this pipeline of talent, where maybe we can extract your students and bring them in for like mentor protege or even internships. And then, hopefully, the OEMs and the suppliers will help bring them up as well. You know, so I really see this being a great opportunity.
That would be exciting.
I'm excited.
What's the timeline we're looking at? Because everything is still in the future, really, as far as I can see. So, what is the timeline of working, you know, getting the cybersecurity to start talking? Like you said, everybody's talking together with this situation.
I think the future is nearer than what you think. As I mentioned, GM is just hiring a whole slew of hackers. Former students is doing this. But I think it's something that's going to evolve over time, as Jen mentioned, and I think this is going to be a great partnership, because many times, we're sort of operating in islands here, you know? We have our students here, I may get a call from somebody, said, you know, they need an intern or something like that, or our service services might, you know, find some internship opportunities. But if we have this partnership going forward, this relationship going forward with all these different organizations, I think it's going to make it a lot easier for our students to quickly get into internship positions and also full-time employment.
Actually, my question was along the same lines, timeline, but I always wanted to know what our time, what we see as our timeline to have a class in place, to have the certificate program in place, and how many students do you see that we can handle? Is there a student number that we can handle as a load into the program?
We haven't projected the number of students. Our first step is to, one, understand this fully, and we're going to be receiving that training in February. Once we do that, then we're going to be working on developing curriculum that we can integrate in our existing cybersecurity program. After that, we're working on specific courses and that certificate. I imagine, and I don't want to, because I'm retiring next year, I don't want to commit, I don't want to commit sympathy to this, but we're probably looking at something like 2020 for the certificate.
Yeah, my goal would be to roll out a certificate program by 2020. And I mean, we're already starting our meetings, our collaborative meetings with the other programs within the community college.
So, fall of 2020, we could have, if it moves along, we'll have a class on this?
Yes.
And integrate it into a certificate program, or will it take longer to develop the specific hacking, automotive hacking certificate?
Our goal would be 2020, fall of 2020, to have it rolled out in its entirety. The nice piece is that we're already starting to see some of those collaborations. Our networking class right now with Bill Reichert, who's the faculty there, has already started, you know, taking his students over to the automotive lab, you know, giving them tours of that, having them start looking at automotive networks in the class today. So, I mean, he's already, you know, jumping into that. So, as much as we can do, you know, as soon as we can, we want to. The other piece that I'm working on, because I did come from the high school level, is I'm working on some modules that we can take down to the high school so we can get them interested, whether it be through some different, just, you know, spending the day there, bringing them up here for a day, getting them involved in some summer camps here, so that we can start filling that pipeline of future students as well, even from that level.
Just add to what Cindy said, it's beyond just bringing students, you know, networking students over to automotive. The automotive department, actually, in your one of the service tech programs, has now required networking, that's a specific course, and that course, which was a sort of a basic networking course, has been modified to actually include networking protocols that are only used with automobiles, things like DSRC and the like, so...
And I wanted to follow that up, and do we have the staff in place now to take this on, or are we going to need new staff with different skill sets to integrate into our existing staff? And would you see those as full-time staff, or?
Well, I think...
I'm just wondering.
You're looking at the staff at the moment. How this evolves, it's really hard to tell. It's hard to predict what, you know, what we're going to need two years from now to be perfectly accurate, because things are changing so rapidly. I know this is going to be very important, and we're actually, as Jen mentioned, we're ahead of the curve. There's no other school in Michigan that's doing anything like this, okay? So, but I certainly anticipate that, you know, 2020, 2021, I think, will have, you know, a real need for, you know, for maybe additional resources, because I think we're going to, I think, I think industry is going to need those students, you know, those trained students coming out of the ECC.
So, I'm just wondering, if we need staff with new skills, do, are we training staff people that are here, or are we hiring from industry or from maybe private contractors like the people that brought us this?
So, our first training in February is going to be attended, you know, Mike and I will be there, there's going to be folks, I think, from the non-credit side that are planning on being there from the auto side, so we're looking at training existing staff. You know, this is going to look, this could look, you know, we may have to be creative in how we, you know, how we move forward with this, you know? Do we look at, you know, some sort of a modular approach? You know, there's going to be some things that, you know, we're going to have to have some discussions on, and really kind of get some ideas that we will eventually come back and present to... Yeah.
But I just want to point out too, that for us in the networking world, this is not new. We're going to be using some of the same tools that we use to, on computer networks, for hacking and for sniffing packets and things of that sort.
Yeah, same thing.
Also, same thing. So, this is not going to be a big, you know, big leap for somebody with a networking background.
Yeah, and I just wanted to really encourage you, as a community college, to not get too ingrained into losing your flexibility by having permanent curriculum developed. You want to stay nimble, because we are solving problems, we're forecasting problems that don't exist yet, so we're not really sure which direction it will go. But I would encourage you to look at other industries as well. We're talking about DSRC, 5G connectivity. It might become increasingly important to have somebody with a telecommunications background as we start talking about smart city infrastructure and the way they communicate to the vehicle via sensor technology. So, you might find that your curriculum grows and expands just through the acceptance of technology by the consumers. Right now, we are in the R&amp;D phase, and these vehicles are only slowly trickling out into a prototype or a concept phase, but as they become readily available on our dealership lots, then we have a bigger issue, because then it's no longer an R&amp;D problem, it's a lifecycle management problem, and nobody's even looking at that yet. How are we, as an industry, in automotive, going to maintain the security of these fleets of vehicles over their lifespan, which can sometimes be ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years, protecting the consumer, the driver, the owner's personally identifiable information? I don't know if you've rented a car recently, I have. You get in the car, you plug in your phone, you see other people's information, right? Their contact list, their playlist, you know, from their nav system where they live. So, all of this information needs to be secured. And so, this is what you should be looking at as you grow and develop this curriculum. It's not going to be one thing, it's going to be multifaceted. And if I could grandstand for a moment, sorry. But I would really encourage having like an intro to cybersecurity course for all of your degree programs. I don't have an IT background, but if you are in PR or marketing or pretty much any element, HR, you have to understand cybersecurity to a certain degree, whether it's the skill set that you're looking to hire, whether it's how you're going to tell the story if your company is hacked and breached. Look at all of the companies. Marriott just had their huge billion-dollar hack that came out last week or the week prior. They have to have a PR campaign ready to address that, and they have to understand at least the fundamentals of cybersecurity to be able to convey that message. So, I think there's a lot of different ways and different opportunities for WCC to really take a lead here.
I agree. Any other questions?
I would like to say...
Yes.
First of all, thank you very much. I mean, this is really outstanding, and to the board, I mean, who would have thought? Who would have thought this? When we talked about advanced transportation and where we were going, who would have thought that this is where we would end up? And it not only comes from our shared vision, but it comes from faculty members like Mike Elliott that took a chance, decided to take the lead, and started working in an area that was totally unknown, and I really appreciate that. And also, our faculty, the automotive faculty, I mean, if you can imagine, when we started talking about this, we were talking about two different, two different disciplines, two very different, because that's how it was. So, I really want to thank you, Mike, because... So I really want to thank you, Mike, because you, you know, you really brought us along, and I appreciate that. And I want to welcome you, Cindy. We used to work with her quite a bit while she was at Pekine, and now we have her here, and that's great. And Jen, I can't believe you don't know anything about IT.
No, isn't she great?
I mean, oh my gosh, that is great. But I also want to mention Neil Goodson, who does a lot of this hacking stuff, not really, I mean, he has an organization that meets voluntarily every weekend.
Yes.
Would you mind if I asked him?
No, go ahead.
Would you, just two seconds, talk about what your weekend organization is?
Yeah, we host the college here, the Ann Arbor Autonomous Vehicle Group. It's a, it's open to everyone in the community. We have a number of engineers, software developers, people with just general interest in technology coming in, working on projects, autonomous vehicle projects, machine learning projects. We've been busy, as the president said, this last year, we've worked every week, virtually every weekend, on some, some projects. The latest thing that we did, you may have seen the article that just came out about it, was a project that we called T-Mado. And it was a little autonomous vehicle that would go up and down the rows of a greenhouse, identify tomato plants that had funguses or some other kind of a disease on them and flag them to take them out of that environment before they infect other plants. And so we had a lot of fun with that. And so we host a lot of these kinds of meetups here, because it's a good opportunity to interface with the community, good opportunity to ferret out opportunities for curriculum, good opportunity to potentially meet instructors, part-time instructors that can help itself, curriculum designers and subject matter experts.
Thank you, Neil. Thank you so much. And, well, and so, you know, we have the Advanced Transportation Center that we are taking a look at as part of our capital outlet project. And so you heard Jen mention smart cities. And, you know, we, this will definitely be in the center. But you can imagine how this will be an engaging center for our community. Because like, as you mentioned, Jen, lifestyle changes, things, I mean, it's going to be very, life is going to be different very rapidly, so.
I would certainly encourage, I mean, we still want to advocate the promise of mobility. I think it does more, it does more good than harm. But another topic that comes to mind is your psych programs. There is a huge need in automotive right now. They're looking for degreed subject matter experts that have a psychology background, because as they're programming the code for machine learning and artificial intelligence, we are now going to have vehicles that are making ethical decisions. And so you want to have programmers that understand human psyche as well. And so this is certainly an area of focus for us at Grimm, and it should be an area of focus for everybody.
Well, what Jen is referring to is the classic problem, right? So if you have the autonomous vehicle or semi-autonomous vehicle driving, and it has to make a choice, it's got, there's an accident, there's an accident going to happen, it's got to make a choice. Who does it protect? Does it protect its occupants? What if the occupants are very elderly, yet in another vehicle, they're very young people? Those are the kind of actual decisions. Because you understand, computers, the one thing that you need to think about is this, what is this technology going to do? Computers don't get drunk, computers don't fall asleep, computers don't need a rest, computers don't go on vacation, computers don't get emotional, they just operate. And in a lot of ways, this technology is going to create a much safer, you know, driving environment, transportation environment. And we should certainly see, you know, traffic accidents be reduced significantly, you know, in the, in the future. But as Jen mentioned, there, computers are going to have to make decisions at some point.
So they're shifting to the zero-death mentality, you know, that's the goal. You do a lot with MDOT, you know? But in my side of the conversation, we know that we're not fully going to zero-death. We're shifting the responsibility from the driver to the programmer. And so you want to make certain that the programmers that you're training and educating are cognizant of their huge responsibility that they'll be carrying on their shoulders. Sorry. I'm always the dark side.
This is really something. I hear about it from Simcock meetings, and we did meet, Simcock did have a seminar last year with the three automotive companies. And we talked about, you know, the Ubers and the Lifts, and that's the first time I heard about Lyft, because GM is doing the Lyft, but they're also doing another automotive car and, and some other vehicles. And so, but I think, I think the main thing is that trying to get this information out is really kind of mind-boggling, because it's so new, and terminology is the main thing. What does this mean, and how's it going to affect me? And what do I do? And do I need to do anything? You know, so there's a lot of things emotionally and psychologically, I'm going to use your term, that's going on with individuals out in the community, too, you know?
But nobody really is, I'm finding out, nobody really has the answer. Things are changing rapidly, and we're just going to have to see what, what, what will happen. I mean, the economic impact, think about it, the first, from what I've read and researched, the first area of impact is trucking.
Yes, it is right now.
Because that's going to happen fairly quickly.
And they're already testing that, as you know, in the state.
Yeah. I mean, what happens to all the, I don't know how many, tens of thousands of truck drivers that we have here? What about all the truck stops? What happens? You know, a computer doesn't need to eat, doesn't, you know, doesn't need to use a salazza, so, so it's got to have, you know, tremendous impact on that.
Trucking is very different, because you can bolt on security versus a car where security needs to be networked in on the front end.
And as I understand, the algorithm for driving a truck on a freeway, or any vehicle on a freeway, is a lot easier than driving on a surface street, so that's why they're looking at it. And there's some innovative solutions. There's a company out in California called Starsky Technologies or something like that, believe it or not, named after Starsky. But what they're doing is sort of a hybrid, a hybrid model, where, yeah, the truck's going to be autonomous, but they're hiring truck drivers, but instead of riding in the vehicle, they're going to be monitoring them, you know, from, you know, and they'll be able to monitor multiple vehicles at some sort of control, control center, so when they get onto a surface road, you know, they can, they can intervene if necessary. So that's our future.
Thank you so much. That was so interesting. Thank you. Okay.
Personnel recommendations.
Okay, monthly reports, and the first one is personnel recommendation. Tab D.
I move we accept the personnel recommendations.
Second?
Support.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. All in.
Anytime.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Ruth has a question.
Do you have a question? Okay. I can't see you there. Okay.
I just wondered if Laura Turner is replacing Lily?
No.
No?
Sheila.
Sheila, okay. That was my only question.
Any other questions?
Glad you mentioned that. I noticed between Carol Denzer and Jeffrey Donahue, Donahue, there's 53 years of service that was here together. I think that's very commendable for us to have such long-term people. We've been saying this for a length of time. And I know that people have been here a long time, and that says a lot about the institution. And I really want to say thank you to them.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. I go to new.
Remarks of the members of the board.
Remarks of the board of trustees.
I'd just like to ask that the next time we talk about retention and developmental education and testing, that we have faculty from those areas that are affected make presentations to us about their work and their, what they're seeing as well. So the next time we talk about that, I'd like to hear from probably the three areas, but whoever's affected. Thank you.
Any other? I just want to say congratulations to board chair, Ms. Diana McKnight-Morton, and my colleague, trustee Landau, for your reelection. Appreciate having you back with us.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I couldn't celebrate like I wanted to. Kick up my heels.
Oh, no.
Yep, my heels were up, but not for them. I'm still recuperating with my broken foot, still going through therapy, so I don't know how long this will be. Seems like forever. Okay, we're going to go down to the president's remarks.
I have only a few remarks tonight. One, I was asked to be the keynote speaker for this consulting group, it's a mentoring group for 100 Women Power Connect Night. And it was really, everyone wore red. And it was great, because some of our employees were all, I don't know, Elizabeth Connor here, Elizabeth was attended, I want to thank her for being there. Shayna Barker also attended, and Andrea also attended. So I'd like to thank them, it was a great event. These are women mentoring women, and so I was happy to be there. The second is, we're going to be in the auto show again, so we're looking forward to that. We have quite a few, well, we have our entry this year, we'll also be, we have an exhibit. We are going to be in the automobility deexit area once again. And we will also, we're going to be showcasing our cybersecurity mobile hacking workbench, and I will also be on a panel. And lastly, have a wonderful holiday season. Thank you.
I have a quick question. I, I heard talk that the North American Auto Show in Detroit was being moved to June. Is that this year or next year?
This is the last year that it'll be, in January in COBO.
And then in 2020, it'll be in June.
Correct. Still at COBO.
2019, you mean?
No, 20.
January 19, it'll be indoors.
This year it'll be 2019. You're right. Okay. You're right. It's December, isn't it?
Right. You're right.
Thank you for that.
Okay, old business. This is the WCC Health and Fitness Center hot water system upgrade. And this will be, Mark, vice president, Mark Daly, Tab C.
Last month, we presented for discussion the hot water upgrades for the Health and Fitness Center. Still the recommendation that we awarded a contract to John Dar Mechanical for $242,000, or $242,500.
I mean, that was a very good point you made.
Yes.
I don't know if you had a chance to read it in the memo.
I did not.
Okay.
So if you could just highlight that.
Yeah, we contacted John Dar Mechanical the day after the last meeting. They accidentally transposed those two numbers on their bid document. So we, we compared their, their numbers correctly to their competitors in both materials and laboring systems.
Okay, thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
I move we, is there a motion here?
Yes, and I can read it. Recommendation is that the board approve a contract with John Dar Mechanical of Ann Arbor as a contractor for the Health and Fitness Center domestic hot water system upgrade project in the amount of $242,500, contingent upon the college administration obtaining a satisfactory contract with the firm. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second? Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, oh, that's right. Roll call. Roll call.
Chair McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Treasurer Milliken?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Here. Yes.
Trustee DeBarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to Tab D, 2018 Emeritus Staff Status recipients. This is that the board recommend, recommendation that the board approve the grant of the following retirees' emeritus staff status, as noted in Board Policy Number 5045, Policy on Emeritus Status. Any, any discussion?
Are there, were there any retiring staff who did not get emeritus status? You don't have to tell me their names, just, was there anyone?
Not that I know of. Was there no?
No, the threshold is 15 years.
Okay, then we will, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second? Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you. And the last. The last is Tab E, settlement of Baker versus Washtenaw Community College lawsuit. Recommendation that the board approve the proposed tentative lawsuit settlement agreement reached between Mark Baker and the college under terms presented during the November 27th, 2018. Closed session board meeting and authorizes the president of the lock of the signed agreement on behalf of the board trustees. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Chair McKnight-Morton? Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Treasurer Milliken?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeBarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. Do I hear a motion?
Also moved. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed adjourning right now? Come on. We're done.